We'll have a roll call, please. Ms. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Cartha?
Here.
Mr. Rikus?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Quattrucci? Here. We'll start out tonight with a public hearing on the 2016-17 school year draft calendar. As required by the Illinois State Board of Education, the Evanston-Skokie Schools holding this public hearing at the Joseph E. Hill Education Center to receive public comment on the district's proposal to allow for up to two full-day school improvement days per school year for a maximum of five years. This proposal would require a waiver of the Illinois School Code pertaining to school improvement days. Are there any comments from the public? If there are no comments regarding the waiver for the 2016-17 school year draft calendar, I hereby conclude this public hearing. The Board will vote on December 14, 2015, to approve the submission of a waiver to the State Board for consideration and action. Okay, the agenda. Claudia Suni?
I move that the Board amend the agenda for tonight's meeting to postpone the approval of waiver submission for the 2016-17 school calendar until the December 14, 2015 Board of Education meeting.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison? Sorry, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes. Board and District Communications, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening and welcome. I want to do a few recognitions this evening. Let me start with a staff recognition. We've been, over the last several meetings, been focusing on the outstanding work of our colleagues who work day in and day out in our schools. And it's just a great pleasure and personal pleasure to recognize Jenna Temkin, who's a teacher at Schut Middle School. She has been awarded a fellowship from the National Artist Teacher Fellowship Program, one of seventeen outstanding arts teachers selected, over eighty applicants for this honor. As part of the application process, Ms. Temkin had to submit a proposal designed to re-inspire the artist within the teacher. And this summer, she traveled to Northern Ireland, Ireland and London to work alongside the noted theater company, the Theater of the Oppressed Company, the Cardboard Citizens, to examine their work highlighting and resolving community-based issues with regional homeless population, many of whom are immigrants and/or refugees. Last month, she traveled to Boston to present her project findings at the Graduate School of Education at Harvard University. And she's working very hard to connect what she has learned at her home base at Schut and something that will be really beneficial as we work with a rising population of immigrant and refugee students. I want to commend Ms. Temkin for her desire to learn and to continue to grow as an educator and artist. I want to thank you for everything you do for all of our students, including my son Kip from a couple of years ago. And it's just a great pleasure on behalf of the Board and all of the staff to honor your great work and to give you a little gift. So, thank you. (applause) And I should have also said that Jenna's working on Shrek the Musical for March at Schut, and tickets are going fast, so... Did I have that right? In March?
March, I can tell.
Second, if I may, I want to take a moment to recognize one of our longstanding community partners, the Evanston In-School Music Association, ISMA. And since 1971, ISMA has presented its Concerts for Kids series in schools throughout District 65. ISMA seeks to inspire students with a full range of musical styles, instruments, cultural traditions, by hosting a free concert in each of our schools. This November, ISMA is hosting Dennis Stomat and L'Espri Crayon for a total of 24 performances in 18 schools. I want to recognize and thank ISMA for bringing joy and appreciation of live music to our schools for over 40 years. Thank you to ISMA for being such a wonderful and valued partner. I do want to take a moment to recognize our technology team and all the colleagues throughout the district. Stacy Beardsley took the lead on this, Jo Carvalho, and a wide range of colleagues to do a fairly-to-vary seamless shift from our old Internet email provider to Gmail. And we are a Gmail platform system. We can now do things like share things with each other. We cannot lose our emails in the middle of writing an email. And I just want to take a moment, and several of the Board members actually wanted to actually really give big pats on the back, to the entire tech team for making this process as seamless as it could be and really getting us into this next generation and next century of communication via the Internet. And last but not least, it was and still is every day is School Board Members' Day. It officially was yesterday, but I want to join the other school districts around the state in celebrating the work of our trustees, our school board members. November 15 formally marks the seventh official statewide observance of School Board Members' Day in Illinois. You all are unpaid volunteers, and yet the seven folks who sit around this table work tirelessly to provide a local voice for educational decisions and to create the best educational environments possible within the resources that we have. We know that, and everybody knows that you must attend meetings, but those hours represent just a fraction of the time that you devote to being educational leaders for the district. And the time includes extracurricular events, participation in professional development, and most importantly, the work that you do to act as guardians of our, two of our most precious resources, our children and our tax dollars. As a community, this is our opportunity to say thank you and to honor your commitment to providing a local voice for everything that we do in our work day in and day out. So please join me in thanking Omar Brown, Candace Chow, Claudia Garrison, Suni Cartha, Jennifer Phillips, Tracy Quattrucci, and Richard Rikus for their ongoing dedication to serving our students, our families, I'm so choked up, and our community.[465.81][465.81](laughter) And we have a little, we have a little cupcake to let you enjoy the celebration. So join me in congratulating them.
Can we break for a few minutes in either cupcake?
Yeah, right. And that, Madam Chair, ends my announcements.
Pass it over to the Board for comments. Well, we'll just say thank you again for our wonderful gift, and we will move on to our action items. Omar?
All right. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the following: Personnel Appointments, Leaves and Separations, Dismissal of Substitute Teacher and Part-Time Custodial Floater, October 2015 Board of Education and Finance Committee Meeting Minutes, Destruction of the September 2012 Closed Session Audio Recording, August 2015 School Treasurer Report and Budget Amendments, September 2015 List of Bills, Gift Acceptance for Dawes and Schut, Head Start Transportation Contract, King Arts Track Bid Rejection.
Second?
Second.
Do we need an amendment for our...
Which one?
No, we did. We did. He didn't say that.
Yeah, I handled it.
Second, please.
Roll call, please. Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes six to zero. Mr. Rikus? Approval of tuition taxation.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution to estimate the taxes to be levied for the tax year 2015 and authorize the Secretary of the Board to publish a legal notice of the hearing.
Second?
Second.
Does anyone want any questions or discussion about this? We did go over it extensively at the Finance Committee, but it... Okay, roll call, please. Mary, do you have something to say?
I just, I would like to take the opportunity to remind the public that the tax levy, while it is a high number at 5.44 percent, that's what we're asking for, we know the clerk will always reduce that to the tax cap limit, and the Consumer Price Index factor for this tax levy is 0.8. It's very low. So the increase we will get will include the CPI factor plus a small amount for whatever new property joins the tax rolls. We're estimating that increase may be closer to 1.11 percent. So while it is a high ask, the clerk will always reduce it to the tax cap limit. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for that explanation. Any other comments? All right, roll call, please. Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes six to zero. Our first discussion item are the enrollment projections.
And we're going to turn to Peter for this, please.
Thank you. I'll just take a couple of minutes here to walk you through the memo that I prepared, and then happy to take any questions that you might have. As background, this is a report that we prepare on an annual basis, and you can see in the background section of the report some information about what we look for from year to year in terms of the accuracy of projections. This comes from work that was contracted by the Board a number of years ago in terms of how enrollment projections are done between districts and what the accuracy of those tends to be. And so what you can see is some guidelines in terms of interpreting the data on the accuracy of projections that you'll see in the appendix to the memo. I wanted to walk through three key findings from our work this year. The first has to do with the accuracy rate of our previous one-year projections. And what you can see is that Tables 1 and 2 show that accuracy rate both at the school and at the grade level. There were a number of schools last year where the projections were different from the actual enrollments, most notably Lincoln, where we had an enrollment that came well under the projected amount, largely because of the activities that we engaged in last year in order to try to manage enrollment at Lincoln, and I'll go into that in detail in a little bit. We also saw at Schut and at Dewey a significantly larger number of students than we had anticipated. And you'll see when we get into sort of the next steps resulting from these projections that those are two schools that we intend to spend some more time on this year, looking at what are the reasons behind that trend, whether it poses issues in terms of space going forward, and then what we might need to do to manage enrollment in those schools. And you can see at the grade level that district-wide, we were fairly close in our projections by grade level, and that our district-wide projection was within 0.5 percent of what was anticipated. Next, let me talk a little bit about our five-year enrollment projections. I think the notable thing here is in the third paragraph that over the last five years we have seen an 8.3 percent increase in the number of students in District 65. That equates to a difference of 562 students compared to five years ago. And if we look at the enrollment projections that were prepared five years ago, we would have projected about half that much of an increase. So to me, this tells me that what's been happening in our community is quite different from what the historical enrollment projections would predict. And it tells me also that if you look at the five-year projections that we have presented here, if the same atypical trends continue into the future, that the projections that I presented here for five years are probably also likely in undercount. And the work that we did last year on enrollment at Lincoln gives us at least a few hints about what some of those trends are. They include an interest on the part of millennials of living in condos and urban-type communities and raising children in smaller homes compared to previous generations. They include families who bought condos before the downturn in the housing market and stayed there once they had their children. And they also represent an undersupply of single-family homes on the Evanston-Skokie housing markets. So those are just some of the factors we identified from our work at Lincoln that may have contributed to the reason that we see some of these increases in some of our particular schools. And in order to really get to the root of this issue and think about what needs to be done in the longer term, there's clearly more analysis that needs to be undertaken to understand what are the factors influencing enrollment, where is enrollment increasing, and where could that increase in enrollment cause some concerns in terms of space usage over time? And I'll talk a little bit at the end about what we intend to do about that in the near term, and then a little bit about what we can do about that in the longer term. Before I get into what we'll do next, I just wanted to also turn your attention to our analysis of the re-enrollment process at Lincoln Elementary School. If you think back to last spring, we did a number of things to try to limit enrollment at Lincoln for this year. This included working with incoming kindergarten families through a number of community meetings and sharing information with them about what the concerns were with over-enrollment at Lincoln, and encouraging them to review and apply for some of the magnet program and magnet school options that existed. You can see in the memo that we had a tremendous acceptance of seats among the kindergarten families at Lincoln, and so as a result, we have far more Lincoln attendance area kindergarten families than we could accommodate at Lincoln. But actually, we have seats available in kindergarten at Lincoln because so many of those kindergarten families chose a seat at a magnet school or in a magnet program. The other thing that we did was to require reregistration of all students across all grade levels. And so the table at the bottom of the second page of this memo shows you for the last three years, for students who had been in kindergarten through 4th grade, so in other words, rising first through 5th graders, what happened to them between the end of one school year and the beginning of the next school year. So if you compare the 2014-15 numbers to the 2015-16 numbers, you'll see that there's actually consistency between what happens with students from the end of one school year to the beginning of the next. So if I start over on the right, you can see that about 9.5 percent of students left District 65 at the end of each of those two school years before the beginning of the next school year. And then if you move one column over to the left, you can see that we had between 1.5 and 2 percent who moved to another school within District 65 because they changed their address. The other three columns, returning to the same school or being placed in another district school, which for example would be through a special ed placement, or a limited choice placement, meaning that they applied to go to a magnet school, those numbers are fairly consistent from one year to the next. So the conclusion I draw from this is that re-enrollment didn't have a big impact on what was happening at Lincoln. So in terms of our next actions, there are two things that we have planned. One is that as a result of this analysis, we've identified a number of schools, Schut, Dewey, Haven, Oakden, Nichols, Washington, and Willard, where for various reasons, when we look at the historical data and the projections for the coming year, we have some reason to believe that either the enrollment projections have been historically off or where we have seen increases in population over time. And so in those schools, what we want to do is work with the school principal to analyze available space and understand if we had more enrollment at that school than we are projecting, would we have space for an additional classroom or classrooms that might be needed? If there are not additional classrooms, as was the case with Lincoln last year, we would then reach out to the PTA and other folks in the community that the principal might recommend in order to engage with them and understand what's happening in the community in terms of housing sales and some of the things that helped us identify what was really going on at Lincoln, and then also to determine whether any particular actions are necessary to manage the enrollment. So as an example, I have had a meeting with the principal and the head of the PTA at Washington Elementary, and one of the things that we discussed was reaching out through the PTA and other community organizations to get the enrollments in, the registrations in as early as possible in the school year so that we would know before school ended whether there were potential for over-enrollment in the fall, and we would be able to take action together then rather than waiting till the following school year. The second thing that I want to highlight is that as we plan for our reregistration process this year, we intend to stick with what we did in 2014-15, which is to just require reregistration for kindergarten, for 6th grade, for students who have been placed outside the district, for students whose families reported temporary addresses, any students for whom we have received return mail, and then also investigating cases that are reported to us by school staff. What we found is that at Lincoln, in any case, we don't see an effect of the re-enrollment. And given the resources that are required in order to carry out full-school reregistration, as well as the impact that it has on the families in our community, especially those families who require resources of transportation and time to get here, where that's a bit of a struggle, we feel that it is, that the policy that we had in place previous will serve us well as we go forward. So let me end it there, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Peter. Questions?
I'll start.
Okay.
Thanks for the information and the overview on this. And thank you to you and everybody else who went through the re-enrollment process at Lincoln. I know that was something that I personally was really pushing for because I know that historically, when we had instituted more regular re-enrollment or reregistration points in time, we'd seen a drop in our student population. So we tested that hypothesis and looked like it didn't really change anything. So I still am grateful that we went through the process to make sure that the students who we're serving are indeed students who we should be serving. Just a couple things. The first, I'm curious about, you know, with projections, I think we've seen a lot of projections over the years, obviously, most of them prior to you joining the district, Peter. And, you know, they've looked different than some of these. One that stands out to me is Haven, which I think, as I look at the projections another five years out, is slated to hit around 865. And I know when we looked at these projections many, probably four or five years ago, it was probably close to 100 more students than that. It was going to be very, very big. And so when I see some of the other numbers, like, I guess two other schools jump out in particular, Washington and Lincoln, Washington with pretty significant growth, and then Lincoln shrinking in a pretty substantial way compared to where it was just a year ago. And knowing that the Board could be making decisions based on those numbers, I don't know if you have any specific thoughts about those two schools and the trends? Because what I did wonder is, are we taking the most recent year of enrollment, and is that having a larger effect than maybe it reasonably should? But I don't really know enough about your methodology, and you're really the expert on this and not me.
Yeah, so let me go over the methodology because it's actually really straightforward. Essentially, what happens, let's just take Table 4 if you want to follow along. You'll see that, for example, at Bessie Rhodes, there are 39 kindergarteners in 2015-16, and that number just carries over so that they become first graders the next year and second graders the year after that, and third graders the year after that. So it's just, for each school, it's just a straight line of however many kids there are in grade X, we just have that same number the following year in grade X plus one. And then for kindergarten, we look at the average of the last three years. So it's really basic, and I think there are probably more sophisticated ways that we could do this. But as I read through the reports that have historically been prepared for the Board, both by my department as well as by the external consultant who was brought in, I think what those, as I understand what I read in those reports, the consultant was not able to significantly improve on this methodology. And so I think as we look at the Lincoln situation from last year, and I look at the historical information that was presented about Lincoln, I'm worried less about creating a more sophisticated projection methodology, so much so as identifying, given these projections, where are the places where we could possibly have problems in terms of space or problems in terms of shrinking, and then both in the short and long term, identifying what we could do about it, and also understanding what are the reasons behind some of the trends that we have seen, as we did last year in Lincoln, so that we can react accordingly. So that having been said, I think in this memo, I feel pretty confident about the one-year projections. As you can see from what I wrote at the beginning of the memo, I would take these five-year projections or any five-year projections that we come up with with a grain of salt because they're just based on historical numbers, they're not based on any analysis of the underlying factors that influence the enrollment.
So if I could just build on that, you talked about historical numbers, which I think is important. And as we look at these at whatever appropriate points in time in the near future, it would be interesting and maybe useful to see the historical context of the enrollments at some of these schools, you know, what their peak enrollments were. You know, for example, King Arts, I know at some points in time in the past had much higher numbers, so that we could understand, I guess, a little bit of that historical context. It would only be one piece of the puzzle to help us weigh in on what might be acceptable in terms of classroom levels. And I did have a thought that I wondered about, Peter, if it's something that we could do, is to see if there is any way that we could correlate the class sizes at our schools with student growth. So I know there's this, the idea is smaller class size is better, right? And what I'd be interested in is, interested in is if we could be more specific to identify at what point in terms of class size is there a difference. And there may be research out there about it that says when you hit 25 students or whatever the numbers are. What's that?
It'd be lower.
Okay. Well, and so that's what I've heard, John, is very generally, when it's around 14 or 15, and then you go over that and, you know, it's, there's not a huge difference, but there's got to be a point where there's a difference. I mean, if you get to 40 students or you get to 35, there's going to be a difference. So what's that range where we would know it's, we would expect to see the same type of student growth? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Think academically specifically, or you're also considering social and emotional?
Yes.[1668.51][1668.51](laughter) I mean, I was talking academically, but your point is an important one, too.
But I think the answers might be different.
Because I think as we make whatever decisions need to be made around space, those would be some important considerations from my point of view.
I would think, without taking into account the makeup of the classroom, that would be a really hard thing, number to come up with.
That's fair.
Because you would have all sorts of variables there that would make a difference.
I think that the way that we could respond to what you're asking about, in the way that would give you the best information, is to compile some of the references from the academic literature and just give you a summary of what has been learned about class size over time. I think that will probably give you better information than I could, given that some of the effects on student learning will be not just how big is the class, but who is the teacher, and what's the climate of the school, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, that's...
But the literature basically says somewhere around 12 or 13 is where you have really significant changes, or should have very significant changes in growth going on. 12 or 13 in a classroom?
In a classroom, where it's really small. And then, but I don't know what the outer range is. I mean, so between 12 and 25, is there a tipping point, or between 12 and 35? Not that we would want to go there.
Thank you.
Candace?
I have a couple of questions to kind of piggyback on Richard's. One was like a specific, a couple of specific ones first. It says in here, Peter, we're not assuming full enrollment in the magnets. Why is that? So because we have control over this, right? Why would we see declining enrollments in the two magnet schools since by design we can make changes to that?
So it has to do with applications, and it has to do with where the applications come from. So when a... So when a parent applies for the magnet school for their child, we assign a random number to their application. And then, over the course of the summer, as we select students for the magnet school, we're basically going down that random numbered list, and picking folks from the lowest random number to the highest random number, with basically three additional criteria. One is, if you are in the catchment area that is near King Arts, for example, you get a preference, and we fill at least 20% of King Arts with folks who live in that attendance area. The second is that we are looking to end up with gender equity between the school where we're pulling the child from, and in the classroom at the magnet school. So if the top 25 kindergarteners all happen to be female, for whatever reason, in our random selection, we would try to balance out and end up with about half boys and half girls in the kindergarten at King Arts. And then, the third thing is class size. So if the school that we are, that a parent has applied from has a class size of 16, and we already have 20 students in the classroom at King Arts, we would not select that child, because we don't want to move from a small class size into a bigger class size. And so the reason why you would see declining enrollment is based on either not having enough applications total, or not having enough applications from schools where we have class sizes that are bigger than the magnet school.
Okay. So but we, but again, like for your, what you did with Lincoln last year.
Yes.
Can affect that, too, by more targeted promotion.
By targeted promotion and proven in programs in the magnet case.
So I guess I, I think we should look at really closely how, given the dual purpose of magnets, one obviously being the value, the most important, being the value proposition which they provide to students and their families. But, you know, secondarily, if we are seeing what looks like very pocketed growth, I mean, this, and I haven't been here as long as you guys, but this, these projections impress me that, that it's very pocketed growth. There's some places that are growing in spikes, and then other places that are dropping in spikes. And that says a couple of things. It says it's harder to manage that, right? And that we have to, just the way with our model, it's going to be difficult to manage that. So we don't have that many tools to do that. And the other thing it raises is this piece, so I guess I'm moving more into a comment now, that combined with this increasing variability in class size. So, you know, I look back to last year's opening, opening of schools, and we had between 15 and 25 was the class range, and now we're from 13 to 27 and a half. So we're going up, moving up in this, you know, variation, which again, is probably, probably coincides with, you know, higher growth in some places and less growth in other places. To me, that says, and I know we're not talking about this this year, but we should think about, again, doing a different type of planning or analysis that potentially looks at attendance area maps over the long term. Because those kinds of pocket growth, I'm not sure how else you manage that. I mean, you're doing a great job with Lincoln being his example, but that's hard to scale. I think it was rather hard to scale across a lot of schools. So I guess that's where I turn into, how, how would you say this kind of, these growth patterns affect the way you would plan, affect your approach to planning? Does it make, does it make you think differently about planning?
Well, I think, maybe three things. One, learning from the example of Lincoln. When we get out with families and help them see what is happening in terms of enrollment in their neighborhood school, and also inform them about magnet options, we did almost too good a job at Lincoln of, of making folks aware of their other options. And so I think we can continue to use that tool in those neighborhoods where we're seeing spikes, which is why I've got this list of schools, and the next step is to chat with the principals. Second, I think you, the way you described the, the spikes in some places in the flat, or the downtrend in other places, is the way I see the data, too. And I agree that in the long run, we may want to consider a longer-term type of analysis that would allow us to consider whether we want to redraw boundaries. But I enter into that with some hesitation, and understanding of how impactful that is on the neighborhoods that would be affected, and therefore wanting to do it in a really deliberate and thoughtful way that will probably be over a course of several years. And then, I think the last thing to your point is, that the more attractive our magnet options are, in addition to informing folks about them, the easier it is to manage enrollment. It's the whole, aside from providing alternatives, it's the, the second purpose for having a magnet program is to facilitate managing enrollment, knowing that over a period of three years, a certain neighborhood may gain a lot of students, but then it may, that may ebb and flow over time. So we may want to consider redrawing boundaries, or we may want to really just focus on magnets as a way of managing that. And I think we've got some work ahead of us over the next couple of years to figure out what the right solution is.
Clearly, we have great people to do it. So thank you, Peter.
So, ditto. So one of the things that this is assumed, or has embedded in it, is the churn that happens between schools. And I'm curious if that's significant at all, in terms of permissive transfers, you know, this doesn't show like the plus four, minus six, kind of, that can happen in the school. So I'm curious if that's a non-issue, or if that is something that's, you know, that is something to take a look at, in terms of how people move, you know, within the district.
So I think that, I think it is an important issue when we get to the level of analyzing what's happening at a particular school. So for example, last year, when we focused our attention on Lincoln, what we found is, that in the whole school, there were only nine permissive transfers, half of which were going to age out the following year. And because the school had been tight on enrollment for so while, for so long, we really weren't approving very many permissive transfers. There are other schools in the district that have a lot of room where more permissive transfers are happening. And so I think, when we get into identifying how to manage enrollment at a, at a particular school, it's definitely one of the factors that we want to look at. We don't account for it in our projections, and that historically seems to have served us okay, because if there is a lot of placement between one school and another, I mean, a good example, just based on geography, is there are a lot of students at Bessie Rhodes who come from Walker. And as long as the trend of how many families want to choose Bessie Rhodes over Walker doesn't change, then the projection methodology that we have continues to be okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'll just also echo what Candace said about the long-term strategy, and just, again, suggest that we need to focus on what that long-term strategy is going to be sooner rather than later, because I think we've had this discussion over several years, obviously, you know, before I was on the board, about enrollment projections being higher than expected, or lower, having these different pockets of, of growth. And, you know, as things continue to be unpredictable in CPS, and that may affect what our enrollment is here over the years, I think the sooner we start figuring out a long-term strategy, rather than just being reactionary when certain schools, when issues may arise, I think that's going to serve us better.
I totally agree, in terms of having a long-term strategy. I think part of the challenge is that even just in a period of a few years, it can change a lot. So just in contrast, you know, Lincolnwood here is shrinking a little bit, but when it was at 415 students, we were thinking that it was going to continue growing. And so we, three or four years ago, might have put a plan in place where we were allowing for more growth at Lincolnwood, maybe having a smaller geography, and then it would have ended up being even smaller than it is today, and in the future. So I get it, but it's, it's so much more art than science, and I feel like whatever we do, we have to, the plan has to be something that isn't permanent, but allows for a lot of flexibility, because there is so much change in a period of two or three or four years. And I don't know what that actually looks like, but that is why I think, to your point, Candace, about having enrollment management through the magnet schools is such an important tool that we can have, because it's one type of tool that allows for flexibility. I think we need others, but that's one that can do that.
And one of the nice things that Peter and team have done is reach out to the city, to look at what they know about housing starts, about the new boom of apartment buildings, et cetera. And yet, it's perplexing. You can look at the south part of our city, and Oakton is growing, and Dawes is shrinking, at least by the projections here. And so what, what's the, what are the issues there? And then we really don't know, in a couple of the places where new apartment buildings are going up, whether or not the theory that Peter has, which is a good one, that millennials will be moving in with their children to smaller spaces rather than single-family homes. If that's the case, as the growth of apartment buildings comes, then the growth of our student population will, will, will come soon thereafter.
I think, just to your point, Richard, you're totally right, we have to be flexible, but the analysis, the numbers that we've had in the past have not been based on that type of analysis, right? They've been based on turning the numbers of history, or, you know, it's the three-year average and the five-year average. So I do think, a long-term strategy does say, let's look at the systemic things that are happening in our community and environment, that we know, you know, we can make a better theory, create theories and hypotheses around what that's going to lead to, as opposed to, because by default, you have one year, you know, that goes down, and your projections are, you know, your projections are based on that, to your point, that they're three years. So I do think we can do a longer term, an analysis for a longer-term strategy that will be different than how we've looked at numbers in the past.
When did we change our methodology? Do you remember?
It was at, about three or so.
I mean, I feel like it was, because we, we raised that same question when we were looking at Caserta A, B, and C. We had three levels of projections from the outside source that we had, and the board agreed, we needed to change what we were doing. And so there was a point when we did change the methodology, and not we, but, you know, at that point, the administration changed the methodology. And I'd have to go back and look, because I feel like even when we shifted methodology, we still, some of the numbers were still very different than what we're seeing today. So I'm just, I get it, and none of it's going to be perfect, but I, I think the right solution may, may be something that is partially permanent, but also, we have to make sure we've got flexibility, too.
And I think, just one comment on that, is that one of the factors at play here is the housing market. Over the last, if you look where we were five years ago, we were at a very unusual place in the housing market. We're now kind of at this weird, flat stage, and the realtors that I interviewed as part of the Lincoln study, had several different predictions about which way it would go. And clearly, the direction of the housing market, and then how folks in Evanston and wanting to move to Evanston respond to that change, is going to be a big part of what our picture looks like in five, 10, 15 years. So I think, I would advise being very cautious about boundary changes until we can understand better how we expect the market to change, and how we expect people with children to change their behavior as a result of changes in the housing market.
Sounds like we have a good plan going forward, then. We're doing the long-term strategy, but being nimble about the, I think one of the most encouraging things you're saying is engaging those communities that have these potential hotspots, because I think we've witnessed that both, there is the methodology, and then there is the psychology of the individual school environments, which really comes into play, because, I think it happened at both Lincolnwood and Lincoln, that it didn't do what we expected it to do, because of both intervention from the district to try to coach people with their options, but also, I think people get scared when things, schools get too overcrowded, and there are some movements within the district, and that, that happens as well. So I think that's great, and the management with the magnets is also an important piece of it. So, great. Any other comments? We're on to leadership and professional development. Thank you, Peter.
So as my colleagues set up, let me, let me just do a quick intro, as we provide an overview and a description of our leadership and professional development activities in the district. And let me start back with the strategic plan. That in the strategic plan, we've got a focus, as we all know, on high-quality teaching and learning, social and emotional learning, building a thriving workforce. And embedded in that work, professional learning is a key and vital part of, of that, of those activities. And we take it seriously, and what we've been working on over the last year, and especially with Stacy's arrival, has been to put our arms around our professional activities, our professional development activities, and to see where we're at, which is what we're going to talk about tonight, and then where, where we might be going. As John and Stacy talk, you'll hear that we've got a certain level of alignment, a broad district-based professional learning, that's tied to what our principals do in their, in their own professional learning, and our assistant principals in their professional learning, that's tied to the instructional leadership teams in each of the schools, that's also tied and complemented by the departmental professional learning that goes on. And so the, the goal over time is to be very aligned, to be very focused on district goals, improving achievement, improving achievement for those who have high needs, making sure that we have the top-notch instructional program, and that we have the opportunities for our top-notch professionals to be even more top-notch professionals by having the opportunities to learn from each other. We, we know we have a long way to go to fine-tune and, and do this work in a way that is really something that we can really celebrate, but there's a lot to celebrate already, and I think that's where we're going to go tonight.
Great. Thank you, Paul. I think what Stacy and I are going to do is give you a brief introduction, an overall summary, walk you through some of the examples of things that are happening right now in the district, we'll heat our summary for you, and then can take some of your questions. So overall, what we want to share with you is what's happening now, the state of professional learning in our district today, and then we'll end by sharing some next steps about our plans and curriculum instruction, and partnership with principals and teachers of where we're planning to improve as, as we move forward. So as Paul mentioned, first of all, I think we see a broad alignment between the professional learning plans that are in the board packet and the strategic plan. We've aligned professional learning for our principals and school leaders, principals and assistant principals, to support specific topics in the strategic plan, and also to support the delivery of high-quality professional learning. Coaching, which is not mentioned specifically in any of the plans, but the instructional coaching is provided by the mathematics coaching team, and the literacy coaching team, and our CPC coaching team, is in place to both support and build upon the learning that takes place in many of the workshops. We're seeing in many areas a cross-curricular collaboration and cross-curricular communication, which is improving consistently between special education and general education, across departments in the curricular side, which is encouraging as well. You'll also see in the principals' ILT plans, or instructional leadership team plans, SMART goals, that are aligned, at least one aligned specifically to scorecard metrics, what impact do we expect this professional learning to have on our academic outcomes of our students, and additional outcomes as well, that have been generated through conversation at the school level, decreases in ODRs, decreases in disparity of out-of-school suspensions, as well as being matched with implementation metrics also, not just outcome of implementation metrics. And this is, comes part and parcel with our work with Dr. Shelby Costner out of UIC, who's been working with the district for a number of years on improving our instructional leadership teams, and supporting principals and school teams in that work. And finally, really recognizing that we do have a need to continue to improve our ability to have conversations and reflect on the impact of our professional learning from across the district. We certainly have not arrived there yet. The SMART goals will be an important step forward, that we can sit with our school leaders and reflect, did we meet our goals? If not, why? If so, why? The same questions. So we're going to dive a little bit more deeply into some of those aspects, and a couple of examples of where you'll see professional learning plans from the instructional leadership teams that are well-aligned, just a couple of examples. Three schools have started the work on culturally relevant pedagogy, Schuett, Lincolnwood, and Willer. Are three schools that have decided that it's best for their schools to start there, directly in alignment with the strategic plan. Haven Middle School has started work on executive functioning through their home base program this year, and several schools have, for example, chosen RTI, Response to Intervention, supports for struggling example, chosen RTI, Response to Intervention, supports for struggling learners. Examples of those are Walker, Orienton, and Nicholas.
To further illustrate some of the examples of alignment to the strategic plan and high-quality teaching and learning, we wanted to call out some of the departmental and district-level professional learning that's focused specifically on reading, math, and highlight, once again, the embedded coaching that supports the implementation of these practices. Taking, walking you through this slide. In the area of reading, we're utilizing half-days, release days, and after-school time in order to engage in three different professional learning activities around reading. One is Making Meaning Lesson Study, which is an embedded opportunity for teachers to work essentially to gather two to three times a year, plan a lesson together, see that lesson executed in one of our classrooms, and debrief on that experience. That's proving to be a really valuable opportunity for teachers to collaborate, see each other's classrooms, and to build a level of confidence in their own ability to implement Making Meaning with fidelity in their classrooms. The additional two professional learning opportunities we have in the area of reading, our first-grade writing workshop, Jill Schlossberg, who's been working on Writing Workshop for a number of years in the district, is focused on first grade this year, and has developed the curriculum and is meeting with teachers on an ongoing basis to front-load that planning, as well as to incorporate an embedded coaching and ongoing professional learning. Her work is continuing also in kindergarten, which was her area of focus last year. Similarly, Megan Gifford is working with fourth-grade reading workshop, again, fully-developed curriculum that's been modified and developed by Megan in-house, and is working with teachers ongoing throughout the year to implement this curriculum for the first time in fourth grade. Very similar experience was, actually was implemented last year in fifth grade. So continuing some conversations in fifth grade, but doing a year-one in fourth grade, that's professional learning, as well as embedded coaching as well. In math, as you well know, Everyday Math Four is new for a large percentage of the teachers in K-5, so we have the summer professional learning, half-days, and instructional coaching focused on K-5 primarily and Everyday Math, and then also some additional work with Connected. And the focus there is fidelity of implementation for the curriculum, but with an extra focus around differentiation opportunities, because we know that's an area of focus that we need to build capacity and look for opportunities for differentiation, and Everyday Math Four really does have some strong opportunities there. And I've kind of spoken to it a couple of times as I've gone through here, but I think something really important about these professional learning opportunities is the work that the instructional coaches do in the district to support the fact that we're not just learning in workshops, that then coaches are going into the classrooms, setting goals with teachers, and providing coaching to support improved implementation and supported learning over time. Couple other areas to call out in regards to alignment for strategic plan, when we take a quick look, high-quality teaching and learning beyond reading and math, we have work that's being done in science to unpack the next-generation science standards in K-5 and 6-8, and we have work that's being done with our two-way immersion, our TWE classes. These opportunities are happening for the middle school, science during the half-days, and through their standing committee, and through K-5, through their standing committee, and two-way immersion, it's partial release days, and some ongoing work with teachers throughout the year in classrooms. Additionally, calling out, and I want to, the next slide addresses the alignment to thriving workforce. One of the things that I want to point out, high-quality teaching and learning and thriving workforce overlap, and overlap 100%. What we tried to do in the process of this, though, is to kind of call out some places where we are very much focused on capacity building in the educator, and then capacity building and implementation. Here are a few examples, and I want to be clear, and we gave you basically a list of opportunities. We tried to pull out some samples around some of these themes. Here are a couple of opportunities beyond, again, the core areas. Special education, I think something very, very important to call out is that we're working on creating opportunities for our special educators to connect more directly to the curricular, curricular professional learning. Our half-days, special education teachers are attending the reading professional development and the math professional development. These opportunities for them to engage around the regular curricular professional learning is really, we're getting some very positive feedback from special educators that that kind of deepening knowledge of curriculum is supporting them better in regards to how their support, their work they're doing in their classrooms with their students. Additionally, we see that there's professional learning and building, generating higher-quality IEPs, the work being done through HalfDreams Academy to deepen knowledge and work with students with autism, and you'll see a couple other bullets there around speech and language, deepening our capacity to promote social language skills, and additionally, the work with psychologists and in art. The art is a professional learning example, the PLC example, which we'll call out some other examples in a few minutes as well.
Also, we've aligned our PD related to our Safe and Supportive School Climate work. So we're doing restorative justice training, and we had started that work last year in five schools, so now we consider ourselves in Phase Two, where we're training in additional four schools this year in sharing circles. Kind of the next step in terms of restorative justice is peace circles. We're really talking about issues related to conflicts and working them out within the classrooms, and we're training five schools this year in a more intensive behavioral interventions. We've also trained all our psychologists and social workers this year in terms of both the sharing and the peace circles. And then, the other important piece of our work is the development of the whole child council and the work we're doing with school climate teams, where we have done initial training with our whole child council, which is up and going in every month. We have a meeting that advises a lot of our work in terms of the school climate teams. So we've trained all of our council members, and we started with our school climate teams in six buildings this year, which we have done training with them, and have ongoing work going on with them related to the development of the school climate in the schools.
So in terms of, we wanted to talk also and highlight professional learning communities, this can be a proper noun, as well, and PLCs. A number of our department chairs, specifically in drama and library, have been really fantastic about beginning to integrate concepts and approaches of PLCs into their professional learning approach for the year. We have really well-established PLCs, professional learning communities for teachers occurring at Dewey. They've been working on this strategy for a number of years, and really beginning to develop at Dawes, and in Washington, and at Lincoln, that are working to develop PLCs for their teachers for the first time. This was a strategy that was called out very clearly in the strategic plan, and in fact, raised by Paul with our book about Sanger when Paul first arrived in the district, as a promising professional learning strategy for the district. There are other high-quality professional learning structures, however, one of those is peer observation, which focuses, again, on being job-embedded and being collaborative in nature. And we have a number of our schools that are using peer observation as a tool to bring teachers together to focus on the work, and those include SHU. And Dawes is focusing on, it's probably a misplaced word, SHU is focusing on peer observation, Haven is focusing on peer observation, and Orienton is also focusing on peer observation protocol to use to move their professional learning forward. Dawes, as I mentioned, is using PLC to focus on RTI processes and practice specific strategies in that.
A third trend that we wanted to really highlight for the group was the district-wide focused exposures to disciplinary literacy. We do have departments that have a focus around disciplinary literacy, but additionally, we're doing these four 15-minute mini lessons at the departmental half-days across district, so all individuals in the district will have these four exposures around disciplinary literacy throughout the year. This is creating an opportunity for us to really develop a shared, or begin to celebrate and share knowledge of the shared definition, and to work on developing vocabulary and shared knowledge across the district that we can create a broader foundation for our work going forward. Additionally, Washington is really focusing on disciplinary literacy in their cross-curricular units, and we see in the departments, theater and physical education, really working on identifying specifically disciplinary vocabulary, and then trying to figure out how to sequence it over the time in District 65 to build students' knowledge in that area. As far as next steps, we will be coming back to you, we have a deliverable at the end of December around professional learning. First and foremost, we want to continue to support the ongoing professional development plans that are in place for this year, and we want to continue to do the work on this December deliverable. The focus of that really is about improving professional learning through collaboration, job-embedded work, with the goal of shifting instructional practice and improving student outcomes. And I think the key there, and Dr. Costner speaks a lot about shifting practice, professional learning ultimately needs to shift practice and improve outcomes. And so part of our thinking and analysis is going to be, you know, is the work that we're doing ultimately shifting practice and improving outcomes? What is doing that? What is not? And what, how should this plan help us to become more effective at that going forward? And additionally, in the memo and on the slide, we kind of call out that December will be coming back with an analysis of current professional learning systems, some of the research on best practices, and beginnings of structures that will help us to improve the professional learning across the district. To close, we really wanted to come back to the points that we had at the beginning in regards to the summary and where we are right now. We see that we, you know, professional learning is well-aligned to strategic plan goals. It's promising to see as much energy moving towards strategic plan goals, and the amount of work and enthusiasm for these topics within our schools and within the district. Principal development is really focused on that high-quality professional learning, so we're working on capacity through the work in instructional leadership teams. Workshops are coupled with instructional coaching, with this idea of shifting practice, and professional learning topics are, we're having, we're seeing collaboration across departments and across schools, so we can be learning from each other through our work. The SMART goal work that John and the principals have begun to put in place around ILT is good work, and we need to take this kind of idea and be able to think about other ways to evaluate the efficacy of our professional learning as we look forward and work to improve, continue to improve on the good things that are happening. Questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Not really a question. I guess it is a question. Just, can you talk about the feat, have you received feedback from principals and teachers about your program, about the program? I'm just talking holistically, not in...
So, one of the places, so in regards to feedback, one, the consortium survey does have several questions focused around professional learning. So the Five E's survey for the campuses, which is completed by teachers, is one place that we're planning on looking in regards to feedback around professional learning. There are also exit surveys through My Learning Plan around each of the individual sessions and workshops that are run, and facilitators of professional learning will go and look at those exit surveys around the individual sessions.
I was talking more like informal feedback.
Sorry, again?
Informal. So have teachers come up and say, hey, you know what? I love this idea. This is great. Professional, it's helped me. Have principals come back and said, SMART goals, we should have done this 10 years ago, thank you. Or, you know, is it the other way around, where maybe they're not talking about it? So that's what I meant by feedback.
You know, I certainly, we do hear informal around different sessions. Certainly, I hear a good bit of informal around the coaching work, as well as some of the curriculum work. There's a good bit more informal buzz around some of the Making Meaning Lesson Study work. John?
Yeah, I'd say, from principals, some of the informal feedback has been designing their professional learning program, designing their professional learning calendar in a way that mirrors their work with Dr. Costner. It's kind of a no-brainer that we should have done a long time ago. So that's been a good fit. It's one plan that they turn in for professional learning, that they turn in for their ILT. I think, also based on the arm wrestling matches that we have for more time, where drama wants to, Drama Department wants to run a PLC for all new teachers and experienced teachers, and take back X number of staff meetings, and principals say, no, that's my time with my teachers, and we really need to focus together. And so I think one of the most frankly encouraging, that we're arguing about who gets the time, and I've got a plan, I need to carry out my plan, we can talk about that next summer, and then I can plan for that, I think has been really, indicates that the time is being used intentionally and purposefully in the schools. So I think that's all been very positive feedback so far.
And we sometimes get critical feedback as well, which is helpful, which is, we want the sessions to be well-planned. We want them to be intentional, we want them to be aligned. And when our good colleagues who are teaching in the classrooms come to a professional learning and they're not, we hear that feedback. And that's actually really important for us to be laser-focused for the next time or the next time.
So, in your summary, the components that you guys talked about coming back in December, I'm really glad to hear that, and I'll be looking forward to the discussion about, you know, best practices and thoughts about how to measure efficacy. So I'm glad to hear that. But I do, I want to call attention, for our viewing public and anyone online, to the fact that we did have the public hearing about the approve a waiver to have a full day of professional development, and that the next year, the draft calendar will include essentially another half-day of professional development, because we'll have five half-days and one full day. No, six half-days and one full day. So there'll be another piece of that. And that leads me to a question that I'm not sure whether we can answer in December, you can answer in December, but I think it is worth thinking about, and that is, what is the cost? How much does professional development cost the district? And I think that goes hand-in-hand with the question of efficacy. And that, and those are my comments. The one question that I have is, do you know how many of your teachers, like what percentage of your teachers get coaching right now? And do you guys have, can you speak in December to the benefits of coaching versus workshop-type half-day work? So I'm just kind of curious if you can speak to that, if you can add that to your list next time. But if you could answer, what percentage of teachers receive coaching right now?
So, answering what percent right now, I would not be able to do, because, so there are a couple of different pieces. In regards to coaching models, there are some options in regards to opting in or opting out of coaching. There's a pretty high percentage of teachers that are engaged in the first-grade work and the fourth-grade work, and, and those are sustained coaching models. There's also coaching going on around the PRC2 grant. So we'd have to...
Explain what that is for people that don't.
Yes, thank you. So there's also coaching that's being provided around nonfiction strategies. PRC2 is a nonfiction strategy that is being supported through a grant from Foundation 65, we're in our final year of that grant, and so there's also some coaching work going on there. But I don't have a solid percent on that in regards to the opt-in, opt-out. And certainly, your question around coaching and workshop, a lot of that will be kind of addressed in conversation around best practices as far as for professional learning. Because I think one thing I want to point out is, coaching is one opportunity to continue the learning from a workshop and sustain learning. There are other, you know, John mentioned that we're doing some peer observations, there's some ongoing work around PLCs. So, you know, there are qualities of really strong professional learning, and then there are different methods and ways to sustain those qualities.
So you'll go into deeper, have a deeper review of that for us in your summer?
That's, so that is a piece of what will be included in December.
Thank you.
And part of that for December is our putting our arms around the goals of the strategic plan, the goals that the board has set forward in terms of student performance, and what we want to accomplish, and how do we believe we can best move forward given current resources? And then where do we go in the future in terms of that sort of training and engagement of our colleagues who are in classrooms?
So I'll start by building off of Jennifer's question, which I think is a really good one. And what, I'd like to actually expand on that, if you can tackle this for December as well. And that is thinking about all of the different methods that you're using. So you talked about coaching, you've talked about collaboration, you've talked about experience-based learning, where you're having them take on a task and see the outcome of that, reflection, coursework. You've talked specifically about live courses, but what about on-demand types of resources? Are they watching videos? Are they going to webcasts? And the reason I think that's important is because when you look at cost and time, and when that professional development can occur, the live classes are the ones that typically have the highest cost and are the most restricted in terms of when they can occur. And those other channels actually open up a lot of opportunity for smaller nuggets of learning, if we want to call it, 10 or 15 minutes, and also the flexibility of not requiring a half-day or a full day to go through, you know, something. I think the mix is appropriate, but I'd be really interested to just understand the model that you are looking at, not necessarily current state, but what you would like to build for the channels or the methods of learning. And I do have a few more questions. The first is, just a couple of comments. I think it's pretty remarkable to see this level of planning compared to what I've seen in the past. I think in other years, we received a list of topics that were going to be implemented at a district level. at a district level. That was, there probably was a little bit more than that, but I think this is a significant shift in the right direction. I really appreciate the connections that seem very intentional to the strategic plan, and that it's not just one section of the strategic plan. You know, of course, you could focus on the teaching and learning portion very easily, but that there are other areas that were brought in as well. And so I think that is really great. A couple of questions or observations, and you can respond as you choose. I was, in looking at the goals, and specifically the outcome goals, there were a few things I noticed. One is, some of them still seem to be process goals as opposed to outcome goals. Some seem to be very aggressive in terms of the quantitative targets they were going after, and others seemed less aggressive. And some seemed like goals that could easily be achieved by those who were involved. And I, I don't distrust that people would try to rig anything, right? When I see a goal of decreasing the, the number of O D Rs by 5% for a target audience, it's kind of easy to influence that outcome. You know, if you end up not issuing an O D R. And so part of me wonders, you know, to what end for that type of goal where it's really easily influenced by the people who have direct control over that? So, I'm just wondering if you could comment to that as it related, all of those comments or the ones you choose as it related to the goals?
Sure, I think those are valid observations. So, I would just say that these are works in progress. And there is, we've gone through two cycles of feedback with most of the principals and me around their I L T plans and different aspects of the plans. They've had one half-day session with Dr. Cosner to look at these plans as well, to share them with their colleagues, they got together in small groups. And, and so I think over time, these plans are also for the first time public. They were public in the principal group for the first time as well. There was some great learning that was happening between principals about, oh, that's, that's what you're working on? I think we can support one another's work. So, I, I think we'll see more, we'll see that cross pollination creating some consistency across schools as well, as principals are able to look at the work of their colleagues across schools and, and have those conversations that I think will be very productive. So, I think this is iterative work that's ongoing. Really, the main objective in this, for this year was to have a benchmark and to have a milestone that we could reflect against at the end. So, whether they're written as aggressive or less aggressive, I, I think that some of the goals that are not yet SMART goals, and some of those goals that are not yet have an aspect that is aligned to the scorecard, we're going to continue to work on that and improve that process, and do that work with teams of teachers as opposed to, that'll shout and give me a draft back in the morning. So, that, that work is going to take some time to do, but again, I think the observations are, are right on.
And part of this was an intentionality to make the strategic plan in a live document. So, getting from where we've been to where we want to go, to have even the SMART goals there, and to really focus on those goals that actually align with our strategic plan is very important in what we're doing.
Two more quick questions. One is, by when? Are these all annual goals? So, it wasn't specified in the actual outcome goal, but I made that assumption the target was for this school year.
Yes.
Okay, great. That one was easy. And the second, or the last one here is, as I looked at some of the district outcome goals compared to the school level outcome goals, there was a really different level of specificity, and it seemed intentional. The district goals didn't, I think in any instance, have a quantifiable measure as an outcome, whereas practically all of the school level ones did. And I just wondered if you could speak to why that might be the case?
I think that's the case because professionals have participated in more professional development around this particular topic and have received that, that feedback. I think that's part of what Stacy was referring to, when she was talking about the work to be done and how we continue to create tools that we can use to measure the impact of the professional learning.
It's, it's an area of workforce, and I think what we need to do is realize a couple of different things. For the bigger picture, literacy, district focuses, literacy map, that's something, that's work we need to do, we need to get quantifiable SMART goals out there. For the department goals, they have, one, we haven't spent time working on the ability to do that. Two, in some cases, they have multiple goals, and so some of them are small, are smaller process pieces. So, it's an area of workforce, and I think we can get, definitely get much more specific and be able to celebrate successes with clarity of achievable.
Great, and I lied, I'm going to throw one more in. And it, just in acknowledgement, I'm really excited about some of the, the work, like the peace circles and restart of justice efforts, I think that's really important. And what I'd be curious about when you all come back in December is, for the areas where the focus has been on a, an event type of training, there's all sorts of research that shows if it's sort of one and done, that it doesn't stick and really change behavior, whether it's a teacher's behavior or any other person who's in the workforce. And so I'd be interested to know more about the types of reinforcement activities that are occurring to make sure that it's having the level of impact that you all want it to have. And you're probably doing some of that, I would just be curious. And I realize that may not necessarily be a board-level type of question, but I think as a, a learning and development professional, it's something that I would be curious, whatever you're able to share without a lot of effort.
Are you, are you asking about the sharing in, the sharing in the peace circles?
I use that as an example because you referenced, you know, training sessions, but it wouldn't be limited just to that. But if you want to speak to it, you're welcome to.
Okay, I will. So, we have an ongoing consultant that works with the schools, and so we do the training, and then we go back and work with the school teams and the principals regarding what's happening. So, it's, it's ongoing work.
Thank you.
Can I, just for the viewing audience, can you guys clarify, because I don't think it was in the beginning of the presentation, about what's district and what's school and how that works? I know that when I was a parent, asking about half-days, wondering sort of what happens, how it works, it's my understanding, but it would be worth having you clarify sort of how, what the balance of that is and how the, you know, one, one month it's this, the next month it's that.
Sure. There are, there are four district half-days this year that belong to the district, three that are school-based. And so that's kind of the balance, and on those district days, districts, the district leads their professional learning, ideally that's still very aligned with school priorities.
Thank you.
I, I would just add that schools also own First and Third Thursdays and use those staff meetings as opportunities to reinforce the professional learning that's happening at the half-day Wednesdays.
Thank you.
That's why also, there's a really key linkage between the instructional leadership teams and the work that they're doing, and what the district's doing, and trying to find the appropriate place for alignment and other places where what the school is doing, what the district is doing can, can find some synergy together. Can I just make one comment, because I, I'm excited about this conversation, and it's a really important one, and it's one that we've made a commitment to be really focused on. I don't want to overpromise our December conversation, because in December, we'll, we'll be fine-tuned much more on focus, but as John put on the table with the SMART goals and how we're working with our principals, it's an iterative process. So, this is as much giving us an opportunity to look at the strategic plan, the goals that we have, to see what past practices have been in the district, to be very transparent about them, and then to start a pathway towards being even more focused over time. So, we may, at, at some point, we may shift some of our mode from large workshops to more online training. We're going to need some time to think about that and think about what the most effective practices are.
And it, I appreciate that, and, you know, it's a, before you and the team were here, it was a question I had asked many times. So, I'm, I'll totally be patient, given that we've got a, a new team onboard, and I think it is something important for us to just have a clear vision about what we're building toward as opposed to just, you know, having the, the methods happen by chance.
And over time, I mean, the efficacy question is a vital one, so please push us, which you will, and, which everybody will.
And especially if we're adding more time for next year's calendar too.
Right, and, but how, how we're actually thinking about the type of training and professional learning that we all need to be a successful organization and to reach all of our children is the bottom line for this. And so, that's the, that's the pathway that we're on.
So, just, just to set expectations as well, the deliverable is due in December. I don't think it's on the board agenda for December. So, it is to be completed in December, we'll have it for you in January to discuss. So, it's, it's just a, it's a December deadline, but not on a December board agenda.
Thank you for clarifying.
Changes Stacy's life significantly with that.
Happy holidays, Stacy.
I have one in December in my...
Good clarification.
Thank you. I, I think Richard hit most of my questions, but, because I did notice that variation, I'm glad to hear that there is, this is an iterative process. But one thing you might have gone over, and I know you're looking at best practices for the different methods of professional learning, but where, beyond the five E's maybe, how are you incorporating the teacher voice into what is most effective or helpful?
I think in the near term, what we're contemplating is doing some small focus groups with folks, with individuals in the district to get their feedback, just in kind of a, basically in a conversation format to test some of the information that's in the five E's, and then some of the kind of informal feedback that we get. So, that's most likely the, what's going to happen in the short term.
And then you're indicating there's a longer-term process to...
So, that's, those are the eyes to December.
Okay.
And then truly, what, in regards to the deliverable in December, we're going to need to then figure out, you know, we're going to be identifying best practices, and then the kind of Paul and Richard's comments, we're going to need to figure out what are the methods that help us best achieve those, those best practices. And that will probably take some ongoing conversation, you know, in terms of our principals are great collaborators, our department heads are great collaborators, we want to make sure that they're part of the conversation in helping us to define the best way to achieve, you know, high-quality professional learning in the district. And teachers clearly have a very important voice in the feedback of their experience. You know, and I've gotten some of that feedback already, I think the focus groups, and then as we move forward and apply, continuing to collaborate to get input is incredibly important.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. So, we look forward to our January viewing of the December report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our upcoming work, Finance Committee Board Meeting on December 7th with the Student Fees, Budget Calendar, and Budget Update, and then our regular board meeting on December 14th with Summer School and Park Assessment on the agenda.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
For the F Y Is, when, if we have questions about the F Y Is?
Right after the committee report.
Okay, great.
Cradle to Career.
We are, the Cradle to Career effort is working on several short-term deliverables, and then all the partners are going into retreat at the end of, either the end of, towards the middle of December or early in January to really be focused on, on outcomes. I, I think, I just want to reiterate the, from the joint board meeting last week, the, the data that we shared across both districts is as much a real, I use the word, I probably overused the word, but it's a real clarion call for our work in Cradle to Career, that young people land at District sixty-five with many of whom are not on track on a college and career readiness track. And throughout the different slices of their lives in, in District sixty-five and in District two oh two, they still remain not on track for college and career readiness. So, I think both districts know this, and that's the commitment of, of our district as a, as an entity and of two oh two, to really focus on where we can do the best we can for all children as they progress through both systems. And indeed, those data that Peter presented last week that talked about the kindergarten readiness that we're just fine-tuning as we go forward is a really important moment for the Cradle to Career folks, and it's something that we have to emphasize in a, an effort that Cradle to Career is doing to emphasize community literacy. Not that we didn't know some of the data before, but we know the data even more now. Across both systems, the challenges that we have for all of our children to do well, and I think as an active member of Cradle to Career, I know many of you are on subcommittees, I think it's a, going to be a very important next stage of the Cradle to Career effort on community literacy to work with District sixty-five and District two oh two to make a difference in the lives of kids.
Great. The Community School Initiative, Candace would be giving us that update, but I don't, I'm not sure when they're meeting next, but she's not here.
Do you know?
Do you know?
We, we were meeting, there's been a transition at Y O U of the Community Schools Director. So, I think that as that new person is getting up and running now, we'll be probably regrouping on that in the near future, but there was a little bit of a pause there.
Okay, great. Head Start, Jennifer?
So, on September 24th and 28th, there were compliance meetings related to the grant and the governance that I participated in. I also reached out to colleagues at the Administration for Children and Families at Health and Human Services, and they've offered to do a conference call with, with Katrina Jones and Amy Small and myself on the 23rd. It's with their Head of Parent Engagement and their Program Director to talk about some best practices that they're seeing to share.
And there was a question, Candace emailed us about the actual versus the budgeted number of students.
And I talked to Katrina about that. So, there are 22 open slots right now. It does not jeopardize in any way the grant right now. The district's newness in being a grantee, they've got some wiggle room. There's also, it's an open enrollment, so there's not a set point in time, so recruitment for those slots happens all the time. There, I think there are two open slots for early head start and 22 open slots for regular head start.
Isn't there, is there a waitlist though?
That's what, there, in the past, there has been a waitlist.
There is one right now.
There's not a waitlist right now.
There's not?
No.
What, hasn't there been one in the past where we've had...
Not in the last several years, there hasn't been for head start. That's partly why when we wrote the grant, we reduced the slots that we were asking for by 24, because that had been a switch. One of the issues is families look for full-time care as opposed to part-time care, and even though we provide busing to another site, parents would prefer to have their children on a full day.
What could we possibly do to try to recruit?
Well, we have an idea. We have, we just, thanks for asking. We actually, Katrina and Amy and Michelle all met recently with Melissa Messenger, and so we have developed a communication, you know, plan, direction that we're going in terms of trying to advertise more that we have this availability. We've also sent out people, our home visitors, et cetera, to do flyers that we've been sending out to different community areas. But another piece, you know, in that, which is, that we noticed actually in the opening report, is that we have children who had not received any kind of pre-K or head start experience before coming into kindergarten. So, we're developing a team of people who are going to work really in a focused way in terms of outreach to, to parents. That has helped us, the, you know, report the information that Peter has identified as to what schools have more students that didn't come in with a preschool experience. So, that will provide us a little bit of help in terms of narrowing down where we need to go and where we need to concentrate.
Thanks, that's helpful. Joint, the next joint committee meeting will be on January 21st. The Park School Advisory Board, Richard, is that?
That is the right date.
December 9?
Seven thirty A M.
And policy, soonie in January. Okay. And wellness, the next meeting for that is December 8. Okay, so now, if we have any questions on the F Y Is, we'll do that before our informal presentation from the public.
Yes, you actually hit one of them, the enrollment and head start. The other is just pointing out something that was in the opening of school's report that I just feel like is really important to highlight. That is, when we look at our early childhood enrollment numbers, which we've looked at going back at least four years, if you look at the students who don't have early childhood experience in a half or a full-day program, the numbers are the same as they were four years ago, almost exactly. For black students, it's 29% have not had that experience. For black students, it's 29% have not had that experience, 19% for Latinos, and 8% for white students. It was 30, 20, and 10 four years ago. So they've essentially not moved. And I know it's embedded in some areas in our strategic plan, but I just, I want to highlight it because I feel like we've talked about how students arrive, I think in our last-
54%.
Right. So they're arriving, and, you know, we're already seeing the differences, and we know it. We see differences by race. And this is an area where we can make a difference. And I feel like as we continue to think about how we're driving early childhood experiences, we, we have just got to get even more focused on this.
I think the committee that I am working on, and Peter and Stacy as well, that we're focusing on, the first task is trying to capture that data with more specificity about where kids are going and how many arrive. Actually, no child, early childhood experience or just, there's more variations than I think our form captures here. So Peter's revising the form, but I do think it's something that's important enough to us that we might want to bring back to the board at some point to revisit, because it is something we've been talking about for a long time. And it isn't necessarily something that we feel like is our charge directly, how do, how, what do we do in those early years? But it is by extension, and I don't think, you know, all of us feel satisfied that we've focused on it.
And this is exactly why I made a comment last week, and I think I talked to Katrina this week about could we get the data, the historic data on our own Head Start programs so that we know of the children that are in the early childhood program and in the Head Start program under District 65, are they among that 54%?
Well, and I know we have, we've done some correlation in the past. I don't know if we compared our program versus others. There definitely was a favorable outcome for students who were in the full or half-day programs. It was, it wasn't surprising at all.
But getting more of them in and making sure that whatever, like, the district has control of is top-notch is something that we should pay attention to.
Maybe a way to bring this back without interrupting our well-planned calendar is to talk about the Achievement Report and maybe to focus on some of that data or expand upon it for our Achievement Report would be a way to begin the conversation.
So at this point, we, we have the Achievement Report planned to be completed before the holiday break so that you can have it early in January. So I'm not sure that that's possible, but there are two pretty in-depth activities we have planned between the beginning of January and the end of the school year. One is a community needs assessment, which is required as part of the Head Start Grant. And through that process, we intend to catalog services that are available, identify how many students are being served through different programs, find out what kind of services are available for students with disabilities, and do some focus group and survey work to understand both from the perspective of providers around the community and from the families themselves, what needs do they perceive in terms of education, health, et cetera. And so that report, we'll be working on to be published by June 30th. And I think that gets us into a lot of good information that we can't get at necessarily even just looking at student outcomes in terms of what do families perceive as their needs. The other report that I'm planning to work on with Katrina and Amy and the others from the Early Childhood Center gets at some of your questions. So I think what I'd like to do is maybe do a little bit more robust job than we historically have in the Achievement and Accountability Report in identifying and tracking what are the, what are the pathways of service that students receive who have been served by District 65. And then in the Achievement and Accountability Report, we've looked at what their third-grade outcomes are. We haven't looked at this new kindergarten readiness measure. So I'd like to just be able to compare kindergarten readiness for students who have been on different pathways in the early childhood programs compared to demographically similar children who have not been through those programs. And I think that can give us some new insight.
You know, and something you might reference, about three years ago, the Evanston Community Foundation did a report on early childhood participation. And they looked at the factors influencing participation in early childhood programs. And it was interesting. And actually, if I had my board bag with me, I, I carry it with me because I think it's, it's interesting. And there are some insights in there that might be useful. So that might be worth seeing if they have a copy laying around and are willing to share.
This conversation makes me also think about the previous one, which is knowing what we know about children who land at kindergarten, what, what are we really doing in a focused way on kindergarten, first and second grade? We have a focus on literacy and early literacy. But what's our professional learning opportunities so that we are working to excel with the children who are perhaps behind?
Okay. Any other FYI questions? Informal presentations from the public? All right. There's no more business before the board, but I'm beginning to adjourn. Thank you.